Good evening, I'd like to call the August City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please take the role.
President.
Present.
President.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
President.
Present.
President.
Present.
President.
Present.
President.
Present. President. Before we move on from this section, Councilman Paplouskas had a prior engagement which precludes his absence tonight. With that, everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. I see there's a lot of people here tonight protesting. That's with a lower than your right. We welcome you to the Cranston City Council Chamber. The other thing I will say is if you disrupt any portion of the meeting, we may have to ask you to leave. We still have business to attend to here on the council, but feel free to hold your signs and be part of the process. With that, I will go to public acknowledgements and commendations. Councilman Brady.
Tonight, I want to recognize a special team here in Cranston. The 2018 Cranston National Birdman Girls Softball Team, ranking fourth in the Little League World Series in Kirkland, Washington. We started an initiative called the Cranston Cares Initiative where people from throughout the community have the opportunity to nominate community members and people that go above and beyond in our community and make a difference. Obviously, this team not only made their parents proud, their fellow teammates proud, their coaches proud, but they also got a community behind them and they made us all proud. So, we appreciate all of your hard work and tonight, we just want to recognize all of you for really making us Cranston proud and we're proud to say that we honor you as our first members of the Cranston Cares Initiative. And without further ado, Mike, do you mind reading these off?
I will. So, as I read these, please come up and Councilman Brady will hand you your citation. To make it official, I will read this. "Of the 2008 Cranston National Birdman Girls Softball Team, ranking fourth in the Little League World Series in Kirkland, Washington, the entire city council extends its sincerest congratulations and very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses its hope for your continued success and good fortune. Signed by the members of the Cranston City Council." So, as I call your name, if you could just stay up here, we could take a quick photo with Councilman Brady. Georgie Ann Edwards.
Yes!
Yep. Take the first way, girls, when you come in. Madison Gundy Way. Ariana Rodi. Delaney Deutsch. Madison Salvato. Thank you, girls. And Richard Ferry.
So, we had an amazing journey. We went through the regionals, being down one game, losing, coming back, winning, and then winning the last game to go on to the World Series. These girls battled all the way through, right to the last game. They played teams from Italy, Texas, Florida, Puerto Rico. They battled and they never gave up. That's the thing about this team is that they never ever gave up. They played to the last out, they played to the last strike, and they gave it their best all the way through. Being the manager and us as coaches, we're very, very proud of them. To travel 2,500 miles across country, plane flights, bus rides, meeting great, great friends, I mean, I'm sure that these girls are on this social media with all their new friends from Texas and all over the world. So, it was a fun journey. Thank you, everyone, for acknowledging us. Ed, thank you very much, appreciate it. And this won't be the last you'll hear of this team, I can guarantee that. Thank you.
On behalf of myself and the Cranston City Council, I just want to say, girls, it's a tremendous accomplishment. Your home city of Cranston is extremely proud of you. Congratulations again. I could not stand up more and clap, so thank you so much. We'll give them a minute to filter out. While they're doing that, the Cranston Arts Commission has a presentation regarding mural projects in the city, which is up next. Representatives of the Cranston Arts Commission, if you could, please come forward at this time. If you could just hit the button that says push.
There we go. Is that better?
That is perfect.
Hi, everybody. My name's Elaine McKenna. I'm the Director of Artists Exchange in Theater 82 on Ralph Square. I'm also on the Cranston Arts Commission, and we have some exciting projects that we're pursuing. One thing that we're doing is we were very inspired by the team down in Westerly who pulled off an amazing event called Bricks and Murals. And we've been very, very lucky that the team has been generous with their time and their information. They've come to Cranston, they've done presentations here, and they're here again today. We also wanted to announce that the Cranston Arts Commission is sponsoring their first mural. It's going to be on the crosstown press wall, and that's coming up before this Bricks and Murals. It's kind of be, kind of an introduction to murals into this part of the town. But tonight, we have some very special guests. We have John Garnier. He's on this town council down in Westerly, and he's the major force behind the entire project down in Westerly called Bricks and Murals, so I'd like him to do his presentation for you. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for the hospitality. My name's John Garnier. I'm Vice President of Bricks and Murals, and I'm not a major force, but I'm part of a force. This is an amazing community event. We have a presentation here. I was just wondering if that light could be shut off there. I think it would be easier for folks to view. That one, perfect. Yes, so, basically, this is about using art to revitalize a community and to use public art as a way of, as an economic builder. Simply put, it's Bricks and Murals what it is, is it was a community basement on profit. And then, most got together about 20 months prior to the project and established. We represented the arts, business, and government sector of our community, and the goal was to host a multi-day festival. It was a five-day festival to populate downtown Westerly and Pawtucket. So, we had two towns, two states, and what we call it, one community. It's about the popular murals depicting historic events and individuals or businesses, and we partnered with a group called the Wild Dogs. And the next one, the Wild Dogs is a group that came out of the Midwest. They're, it's a little term, it's used, little sign papers used to be called Wild Dogs. And they used to go around the country and they'd paint those famous Coca-Cola signs you see inside the building. And a lot of those evolved in the way. Well, this new movement came up of mural artists, and literally from around the globe. When we did our project, we had artists from as far as Germany, we had a number of Canadian provinces, and I think we had 17 to, I think it was around 17 or 20 different states in the US plus somewhere along the Virgin Islands. So, a real group that get together, and you could find out more at wilddogs.com, but they do a lot in the Midwest. And we got a start in the Midwest, but a lot of these smaller towns where these murals and these advertising murals would be seen. And these are the goals, is to beautify downtown, to increase the appreciation of the hometown through art. So, it really made to create a unique experience. You have Ralph Square, and it's, these areas are unique. They're not been, you know, they're not being created any longer. And to preserve those and to draw visitors to those areas and to have these rebirth in those sort of communities can do things like increase foot traffic. So, what we want to do is have more foot traffic versus cars and a placement of public art, some of which are in intimate locations that you can't really see on foot. You can't really see them in a car. And again, the important thing from a community perspective, and I know for the city of Cranston and all in Westerly, that's important, we have a meals tax, we have a beverage taxes that come into the, that we receive about 1% of those proceeds from the state. So, if you increase economic activity in these areas, you see increased tax revenue that come into the town as well as the state. So, basically, this is a mural that was in progress, one of these intimate murals. It's in a side alley, and that would depict the granite industry in Westerly, which was famous for. So, you see scaffolding like this, you'd see sometimes re-set up in the street, so there's a little re-set up in a parking spot there, and they're painting this mural on the side of the building. And now, we're seeing Mrs. Wilcox, who dedicated Wilcox Park and bought the properties and helped to establish it. Scissor lifts, regular little scaffolding, pipe scaffolding was used, and then ultimately we came down to, and occasionally, we used some big stuff. And we had one mural that was in a particularly high location, and that was the Block Island and the Steamship mural. So, again, these are meant to be seen, they're meant to beautify downtown, and that is the Savoy Hotel, which is in downtown Westerly. Now, it's going to convert to condos, but it is an old hotel. They used to be serviced right beyond with his Zantrac. So, we'll move on, and we see, so, here's what really happened. If you go in this, if you click on that YouTube video, you will see what the event looked like, what happened to our downtown. And, cannot, oh, maybe we can. Try, try say okay. We may not, okay. But we'll be sure to get that to you. Basically, what happened was literally people from all around the country came to this festival. One, because the Wild Dogs draw people from all around the country, the US, Canada, and Europe that came to the festival. Number two, we were able to advertise in our area and our local folks came. And we had things like a trolley that was traveling around so people could go visit the mural sites. We had an open wagon, a hay wagon, for the kids and for the families to ride around in. And on the trolley tour, we talked about the historic significance of each and every mural, and this is important. If you want to talk about preserving or reaching the community, you've got to tell the story of the community, and that's what we were doing, telling the story of our community one mural at a time. The mural is dedicated to the 1938 hurricane. It goes to our first responders, and it goes to our firemen, but it also goes to working men and women who restored our communities after the 1938 hurricane. Our community in 1938, some of the information is that there was a funeral every single day in the city, in the town of Westerly for over a month straight, where victims of the funeral, victims of the hurricane were buried. And we have one of those veterans mural, which went to a Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, Mr. James Barber, who turned events at Petersburg. So, the community starts remembering in its collective history, it starts remembering who it is. And we had incidents where we had another mural having to do with a telephone company. And a woman was crying on the side of the road, older lady, and she said, "That's my grandfather, great-grandfather, and I thought the town forgot him." So, you have this, you have that in Cranston. You have the roots that are that sort of deep here, and that can make a difference to your community. So, the pride of the community. Couple of things we've noticed is less trash on the road, on the ground, after you do a project like this. It's kind of strange. We'll move on. An important part about it is to create something, we're the children's mural. So, if you're going to do projects like this, if the city council gets behind it, please make sure and insist upon that the youngest get to be there. So, these little kids, this is a children's mural, and you have to be a kid to pay it. But if you pay it on the children's mural, and we have one every year, a little one that's going up as we continue our efforts, that kid, when they come back at 40 years old, at 30 years old, at 50 years old, will say, "Hey, I did that when I was your age." So, involve your schools, the art program. This was done by Wesley High School students. This was a tribute to the Italian culture, which we have a very strong invite with the Italian culture in Westerly, as you do here in Cranston. The next page we're going to look at is, now, here's the important things for the police department, for the opto-views here, for the groups that are going to organize this, one of the important things is liability insurance. It has to be covered, it's on the checklist. But the buy-in from the local government, from the council, from the mayor's, and that is, zoning may be an issue, considering, it may be considered signage, re-handing it at our council by allowing a one-time exemption for this program. So, it was special. It wasn't considered advertising because no active businesses were on this. City government officials need to understand and endorse public art and the concept. And then, the police, it's a great opportunity for the police department, because we see here, we had bicycle officers out, it was from a public relations, community relations aspect, it was a great, great opportunity. And again, this was for five days. And then, ultimately, a wall owners agreement, which is a legal agreement to protect the investment, because you are actually putting an investment that somebody else's property. Now, in Westerly, there was no public financing that went into it, no, the town of Westerly financing went into it. What went into it was all private and grants and things of that nature. So, it was raised by there. But the important part of the council's rule was to be an enabler, was to allow it to occur. And I have to say, it was very, very successful. If you've been to Westerly since, we have 16 of these up, and they're amazing. We have a mobile app. Go ahead.
Yeah, from John Johnson, to support this as well, it's actually grown to the point where we needed to put together a mobile app, because we had enough people that come to the town that couldn't, you know, couldn't get the information faster. And we're using that now as a vehicle, as we finished up last year, and what we're doing this year to grow, to keep it going. Every year, we're going to have an event, and people in Westerly and in Stoneington ask us all the time, "What's next? What's next?" And it's a great feeling, because they want to get involved, and everyone had a great time, and the stores could prosper from it. And like John, you know, John said, the streets are cleaner, people smile more, it looks beautiful.
The event that's going on this year, and it will go on every year, annual event and a celebration, is a thing called Downtown Shutdown Live. And it's a celebration of the arts, but it highlights especially our performing arts, but especially out of our schools. So, I both Stoneington High School and Wesley High School, the kids are going to play a major role here in being out in the street. So, what happened since the festival? Well, we got a lot of press. So, the road show, Providence Journal, Saltwood Island, a number of, have done a number of stories about destination Westerly to get the word out that, you know, come on down. And we continue to do more, and again, the original sponsorship, and then the shutdown live. But again, it's about engaging the community, it's about engaging the resources, and a large part of that are you, the children of your community, your younger scholars. So, with that, I think we're pretty much wrapped up. So, we're going to open any questions. This is Fred Paletta. Fred is a great, been a great resource for marketing. He came from that background professionally and helped us in crafting our message and making sure that we were able to reach out. So, Fred, if you want to join me over there. Elaine, turn it over to you guys.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to open the floor to council members for their questions. Councilman Brady.
First off, I think this is absolutely amazing. I'd love to see it come to the city of Cranston. I applaud you guys working together with another town to possibly make it happen. I love that it's crowdfunded or crowdsourced, so it's not city financing, and obviously donors and sponsors can come forward. Please contact me when the time does come, because I would be very willing to donate to see the city of Cranston continue to improve and be a city of the arts, just like the city of the arts. My only question would be, how, what is the application process between getting a mural? How did you do that in Westerly? How did businesses go about getting a wall space?
Sure. And working with the Wild Dogs, all these murals went up all at the same time. So, when it came time to pick the subject matter, that came from the local committee. Mostly, you know, it becomes from the local committee, your folks who know it. And you provide that material to the artists, and then the artists come up with a concept. So, that's the process, creative process. The process for sponsorships, our sponsorships, they're $10,000 a mural. It cost, we raised about, we had available about $150,000 between cash and in-kind donations. For example, Benjamin Moore supplied all our paints. So, everything, eight primary was supplied by Benjamin Moore. We had companies that donated lifts, that lifts yourself is about $5,000. So, we totally, in-kind and cash, raised 100, equivalent of $170,000 to put this event on. So, a lot of it came, now, a $10,000 sponsorship meant that my, the company, my civic organization, would have a plaque there that mural stating that we had sponsored it and stating that we had, who the artists were, that developed it and where they came from. So, I hope that answered your question.
Councilman McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. I too applaud you taking the time and explaining this to us. We had a conversation, John, you and I, Elaine. What is the lifespan for one of these murals? Do you have an idea how, are they protected from the elements?
No, they're not protected from the elements. There's special mural paints that have been developed. Many of the more that are paint has been designed specifically for murals as well as houses in the long term. The murals started 20 years ago in Wild Dogs. There have been some murals that have needed to be touched up, but by and large, pretty much, we're looking at our lifespan. Our agreement at Wall Owners Agreement is a 25-year agreement. And one of the reasons we're doing festivals, continuing to do our festivals, we are raising money for two things. One, a mural maintenance fund, of which we have, I think, $15,000 in right now. And number two, we have a scholarship for both a Wesley High and a Stoneington High graduate that's pursuing further education in the arts, and there's a $1,000 scholarships. So, we are continuing to raise money for those two things. One, to make sure the money's on hand when it comes time to maintain it, because that's important. We have put protective coating, anti-graffiti coating on it that actually was developed for the New York city subway and for subway cars, and supposedly it works very well. But I have to say, we have not had a single act, and nor has the Wild Dogs experienced a single act of vandalism to many of the murals in their 20-year history. There's a feeling amongst the artist community that there's an appreciation, that some of the folks who tag, sometimes who tag things and do it in a particular artistic fashion, they view themselves as artists, and they seem to respect other artists, because we haven't seen that.
Yeah, that was my concern as far as protecting, so there's like a seal that you say that...
Yeah, it's a silicone-based product that you can put over it, and should it get tagged, you powder wash it off, you know, you wash it off, or a little hose and a little soap, and then you put the silicone sealant back over again. It also has UV protection also.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, President. One of the things I did when I first heard of this program was I went around to the businesses in Ralph Street and asked them what they thought. In particular, one of our famous landmarks is Durfies, and I went over and talked to them about it, and they absolutely loved the idea. I think it'll revitalize the area, it'll clean it up. The businesses seem to want to support it, it'll probably bring in new business to Ralph Streets, to some of those empty storefronts, and I think it's a great idea, and I commend you for doing it.
So, if no one else has any questions, I have a couple to direct the musk in. No, they're actually three.
Okay, I figured we'd come up.
Yeah, so, this sounds like a great program, sounds like something I think the city council could get behind. I was wondering if the administration had any kind of feelings or thoughts about it?
Yeah, the administration's very supportive of this. We're happy to work with the council. We probably would most likely put our constituent affairs director as the lead on this. Leanne would probably be the lead on this to help coordinate from our end, but we're happy to work with the Arts Council. As somebody who grew up in Ralph Square, I'm pretty excited about it happening in the neighborhood where I grew up. I think it'd be a great thing for the community. We would love to see kids from Cranston East involved, if it's on this side of the city, if they do something in different parts of the city, you know, anything we can do to bring that community feel together. So, administration is fully supportive of this, and will work through whatever permitting or, you know, if there's some logistics that we have to get through, we're happy to work with the council and the public on this.
Okay, so, I would expect the Arts Commission to work with Leanne and leverage Councilman McCauley, or myself, or Councilman Hopkins, or anybody on the council as needed, but I would think the Arts Commission probably has the best ideas how to get this done. The administration would know how to navigate through all the city policies, so hopefully we can see an ordinance or a resolution come in the next month or two, and we can start the process and see if we can get this happening.
Yep, we're just, the mayor's just committed that if we have, that it's our local people painting. That's the one thing, when I talked to him about it, that he was sort of passionate about the fact that as long as it's local groups involved, local groups that we're going to see out there, young people, we're really excited about it.
I would love to invite any of my colleagues here from Cranston to come on down. We'd gladly give you a tour, let you talk to some local businesses, let you talk to and see the murals up live, and I'm sure we can scare up a little food and drink in a beautiful downtown.
Well, you took a drive to Cranston, so I think a few of us might have to come down and see you in Westerly.
Thank you.
So, our goal is to, we're shooting for 2021. We believe that's how long it will take to plan for this event. Our goal is to add it on to the already existing Fallout of Summer Arts Festival, which is a one-day event, and we would stretch it to a four-day event like Westerly, just to add on the murals. The anticipate, you know, if the Wild Dogs get involved, they had 120 artists come from all over the country, but they have up to 250, so we could have as many as that many artists coming. So we could have as many as that many artists coming. We would also need an additional 200 volunteers to help with the event. So it's a massive undertaking, both the fundraising and all the Walldogs that come need housing and we're looking for hosts. So we would really need everyone's network to accomplish this massive task. So those are the kind of supports we're going to need from the council and the city and all the businesses in the area and that kind of thing, and the residents. So that's our plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have public hearings. This is limited to doctored matters, so anyone here to speak on a doctored item on the council, please name and address, come to the podium. Good evening. Name and address to the record.
Cindy Fogarty, 60 Ozzdale Road. I'm here to speak on the item under Council Communications, looking for a traffic sign at Ozzdale and Norwood. I live at 60 Ozzdale, which is, this corner encompasses its merging of five streets. Some of you may remember, I was here last year speaking before you, as there was an ordinance that was put into place to put a stop sign there. There are three stop signs where the five streets come in right now. And last year we successfully, my neighbors, a couple neighbors were here, Fred White, who lives on the street, with me, maybe a petition of 35 neighbors who are opposed to putting an additional stop sign in the area. I have lived there for 32 years, raised my two children there. They played in the streets, they rode their bikes, they played football on the lawn. We don't have a fenced yard and we've never had an incident here. They are healthy, mature adults at this point. In the 32 years that I have lived there, I personally witnessed one fender bender at that intersection. And speaking with the police chief last year, he agreed with me that this area, this particular street, didn't need any additional stop signage. I noted that this came out of one person saying that he's asked over and over again for a stop sign and nothing has been done. And it's not that nothing has been done, it's that what he wanted wasn't done. The city has looked at this site numerous times to see whether there should be additional signage there. Again, as I said, we looked at it last year. So multiple times we have looked at it. I wanted to give you some information from the federal memorial on uniform traffic control devices, which controls all three stop signs and so forth. And I believe the complaint said that while people speed through that area, and the guidelines specifically say you don't put up a stop sign to stop speeding. What happens when you put multiple, multiple stop signs in a row is that people actually tend to speed in between the stop signs to make up for the time that they're stopping. And so the federal government has all kinds of studies indicating that. So that doesn't, it doesn't help what the problem was. As I mentioned earlier, there are three stop signs was on, in those five streets that merge there. I think enforcement of the existing stop signs might help with some of the issues in the neighborhood. The guides also address maybe putting a stop sign if you have a crash site problem. And their standard is five reported incidents within one year. And I can tell you that within the past year, there hasn't been one. I think a quick phone call to the police department could say, "How many crashes do we have over that site?" And you certainly wouldn't find five in the past year. So I would just not want us to keep spending tax dollars to keep doing studies over in this area. And I don't want to come back here every year and ask you not to put a stop sign there. So I'd ask you to pass on doing another traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fogarty. Anyone else to speak on doctored items this evening? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution recognizing September 2000... Yes?
We have, we have some...
I believe those are on public hearings. They come up later under ordinance? No problem. Resolution recognizes September 2018 as Deaf Awareness Month, sponsored by Council President Farina, Councilman Brady, Councilman Poplaskis, McCauley, Councilman Hopkins, and Councilman Archetto. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Under discussion, I'll just say that inclusion is a big part of the city council. When this came across our desks to recognize this segment of the population, almost the entire council thought this was a great idea for us to build this resolution and put it through. So thank you to everyone for supporting it. I think we only missed one councilman and you missed the email. I'm assuming you'd like to be added as a sponsor?
Yes, Council President. As the uncle of a deaf nephew, I certainly think it's my duty to do that.
And Councilman Lanning, I think you were having your medical challenge when the email went out.
Yes, I'd like to be a sponsor also, thank you.
Thank you, sir. That makes it unanimous, nine for nine. Councilman Psychos.
I'm number nine.
Oh, okay, now it's nine. Okay, good, now it's nine up. So again, this is a good segment of the population that gets overlooked and we at the city council believe in inclusion here. With that, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
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 Report of committees. Finance Committee, Council Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. First, we have the resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements. This passed unanimously in committee.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Archetto?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Next, we have the resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements. This is a list there, this passed unanimously, I'd urge approval here.
I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Archetto?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements. This also passed unanimously, I'd urge passage.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, second and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have the tax interest waiver approval. Well, this passed unanimously as well, I'd urge passage.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
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 Yes.
Next, we have 17, 7-18-05 ordinance ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with the National Association of Government Employees Local Rhode Island 153 Custodian Unit. This is for July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2020, introduced pursuant to charter section 11.02.1. Was heard by the Finance Committee on August 16. I'd urge passage.
I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Archetto?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
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 Yes.
Next, we have 7-18-06 ordinance ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining
agreement with the Rhode Island Laborers District Council 1322 Bus Drivers Unit. This is also a contract that runs from, ran from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2020. A slight revision of that contract, introduced pursuant to same charter section 11.02.1. And this was heard on August 16 by the committee and it was passed unanimously. I'd urge passage here.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Councilman Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. Same thing, both the Finance Director and the Schools' Financial Officer both spoke on this and said that we could afford it. It was a slight, very slight change, it's not going to cost us that much. So I would urge passage at this point.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Archetto?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
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 Yes.
Ordinance Committee, since Councilman Poplaskis is not here, Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is 618-03, ordinance and amendment of title 8.08, the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Building Code: Housing Standards Online Monitoring of Complaints Sponsored by Councilman Stykos. This failed in committee. Moving on to the next, 718-01, ordinance and amendment of chapter 10-32 of the title 10 of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic: Valone Road and Chest Ave Three Way Stop Sponsored by Councilman Poplaskis. Recommended approval pending a traffic report.
I want to entertain a motion to approve pending a traffic report?
So moved.
I have a motion to approve pending a traffic report, I have a second. I have a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
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 Yes.
Next item is 718-02, ordinance and amendment of chapter 10.32 of the title 10 of the Code
of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic: Beview and Dennis Four Way Stop Sponsored by Councilman Stykos. Recommended for approval pending a traffic report.
I want to entertain a motion to approve pending a traffic report?
So moved.
A motion to approve and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Next item is 7-18-03, ordinance and amendment of chapter 10.32-040 of title 10 of the Code
of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic: Tacoma, Atwood, No Parking as amended in committee, sponsored by Councilman Poplaskis.
Motion to approve as amended in committee? I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended in committee.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve as amended in committee and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
Yes.
The next item is 718-04, ordinance and amendment of title 10, chapter 32.280 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic: Tiffany-Atwood, No Parking as amended in committee, sponsored by Councilman Poplaskis.
I will entertain a motion to approve as amended in committee.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Seiko?
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 Yes.
Yes.
With that, I believe that takes the business of the ordinance committee to a close. We are opening public hearings. I did have two requests for two people to speak first, so Dorothy, as I open public comment on anything, this is public comment on anything you'd like to speak on. Dorothy, you're first, and then Tim, you can go second, and then we can open it to the rest. Good evening, Dorothy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dorothy D'Ulo, 32 Crawford Street here in Cranston. And we here are the residents of Crawford Street. Most of us have lived here for more than 15 years. Some of us have lived more than 55 years here in your great city. We take pride in our neighborhood and value the relationships we have developed with each other. And we are here today to raise some concerns about what is happening on our street. Crawford Street has signs at each end and the signs read "No Through Trucks." However, there have been trucks towing junk cars back and forth, up and down our street. And they go to, we believe, a junkyard at the end of the street. It's at the west end of our street, next to Hillside Auto Sales. Also, speeding has always been an issue and it has become more frequent now due to the junkyard. We are disappointed and somewhat disgusted with it, for this is a residential area and we have many families with small children. There are many potholes that should be taken care of. And also, we have seen many rats on our street. They run back and forth at all times of the evening. We also have some homeless people living under the Crawford Street Bridge. And it's at the Gansett Avenue area. We have many trees on the bike path that are extremely tall and the branches have fallen and damaged some of our properties. This is also a safety hazard. Our taxes have gone up and our neighborhood conditions have deteriorated. And we're looking for some solutions and some help from people here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Before you go, I'm actually going to ask the administration, I know Director Lopez was working on this, if you could just give some feedback to the people that are here.
He just briefly, briefed me quickly tonight and that he's working with a building official on the question on the business. I believe you mentioned a business that got sold. He is working on that, but I would recommend, I don't know if you have spoken with Leanne Zarella yet from Constituent Affairs, because what I'm hearing now are a bunch of, a series of issues, not just one issue that you're working with Mr. Lopez on.
I had wrote, and I've given all this information to Carlos.
Okay, so I need to follow up with Carlos and Leanne, and Leanne Zarella will continue to look at each of those individual things, because you have a series of different issues that would involve different departments, so I need one central person to work with you, so that we're not running you through ten different departments to do this.
Okay.
So I will give you, give me two seconds to write something down for you.
You do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Tim?
Kevin Pycarski, forty-nine Holy Lane, Holy Court Avenue. Well, since the mayor and Mr. Lopez wouldn't come to see me, see this cemetery, excuse me? Kevin Pycarski, forty-nine Holy Lane, Holy Court Avenue. So if they say a picture is worth a thousand words, I get ten thousand words for this city council here. When he's going to do something, sure, when he's going to do something in the city about these historic cemeteries that nobody takes care of, that people go and dig up the graves, knocking out the tree roots, that tree that Mr. Brady was found and seen three weeks ago is no longer there, it was on the power lines, could have killed someone. The last time I was here, I specifically stated that, but no, Mr. Lopez said, "The tree warden and the arborist have looked at it, they're fine." Well, I'll tell you what, when the guy who's taking the thing off the power line said, I told him that story, he says to me, well, who is it, Stevie Wonder, who was the arborist? Well, you know what, it's not even funny anymore. Someone could get killed here. There's another tree that's dead, laying in the other tree, right next to that one. Mr. Brady again, has seen it, he's seen the other one, we reported it, we asked for help again. Three years, three years, I too have been a resident of the city for thirty-two years, I've been a taxpayer, thirty-two years. I haven't got anybody down here except for Mr. Brady came down, he just started, and the previous city council member came down. He came down, he did the same thing, and what happens? Nothing. So this is the third time I've been here. After this, I'm going to go to the State House where it might be state law, it might be, I don't know whose law it is, but somebody's going to get killed, but I want everybody to see it, I want you to see the holes that were dug there, I want to know why the mayor and Mr. Lopez can't spend ten minutes to come up to my house to take a look at it, but they can get their picture in the Cranston Herald, smiling next to the same people that dug up the holes in that cemetery, because six weeks ago, I believe I see there the Cranston Herald again. For blessing ain't fine, but to come look for a taxpayer to see if somebody's going to get killed there, doesn't have the time to see it, nobody has the time. So I thank Mr. Brady for coming down and his help, I wanted you all to see it so nobody could say they didn't know about it, we didn't know was aware of it. If it's somebody else's law and there's no law there, put one into place so nobody gets killed, for God's sakes, because last Friday, the Friday of the tenth, the woman who's the stay-at-home mom next to me and her son, I was at the store and she went, "Can you please leave your truck in the road so my mother doesn't come through here and get killed from that tree if it slips out of that, out of the power lines?" So instead of doing the right thing in the first place, three years ago, now we had the electric company there, we had the Cranston Police Department there, we had the, the tree company, this private tree company, I believe, to get them out of the wires list, and now we have the department of, the highway department down there to take the other tree. And lo and behold, what do you know, I get lied to again. They tell me, "Oh, the other tree's dead, we're going to take that out next week." Well, two weeks later, two weeks later, they still haven't come back, and the tree that was originally fell on there, half of it is still in the cemetery, sticking out with the blue paint. Where'd the blue paint come from? Who sprayed them? Who dug them? I don't know if it was legal, illegal. Somebody has to do something. State House is next, if it takes me twenty years, if I live that long, I am not going to give up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pycarski. Anyone else to speak on undocked it? Name and address of the record, please.
John Donigan, sixty Packard Street. I just wanted to speak tonight on the, the communication regarding the stop sign at Ozdale, Noel Wood and Crothers. As I was speaking with some neighbors in the ward, that issue had been brought up, and that's why I had passed it along to the appropriate, appropriate council person. Obviously, had I known that this was something that was studied last year, would have handled it differently, so I'd just like to, you know, publicly state that that was me that, that wanted it to get on the, the docket, and I appreciate the people that came out tonight to discuss it, and I appreciate you all listening, and, and I'd also like to thank the residents from Crawford Street, having spoken with all of them regarding this issue, I know that, you know, it's a strong community, and I'm glad to see people coming out and, and, you know, speaking on issues that they care about. Thank you.
Thanks, John Donigan. Anyone else to speak on anything? Seeing none, that section of the meeting is now closed.
First and foremost, Council President.
Councilman Alcetto, no problem.
Thank you, I just want to make some comments on Crawford Street. The residents have called me about the issue, I have called Leanne Zarella, since for the last probably eight weeks. I've learned about the tree issue, and I know Carlos, and I spoke about the bike path and the trees, like there's an issue with DM in the state about that. And the auto body shop, I had several conversations with them about that. It was supposed to be on tonight's docket, and I called the clerk, and I don't know why it's not on communications, but I called you about five days ago to put it on tonight's docket, and it is not there. The auto body shop on Crawford Street was supposed to be on council communications this evening. Thank you.
We did communicate about it, so apologies from the clerk. All right, moving on, election of city officials, board of canvases, Deborah A. Kanzone has resigned from her position, she was a Democratic alternate. We did receive a letter from Chairman Sepe. Unfortunately, the top two people were ineligible, so he will be drafting a new letter and sending it to us, I'm assuming either through the majority, the minority leader, or directly to the Board of Camvases, next month. Tax Assessment Board of Review, Stephanie Socia as an appointment as a member. Stephanie has been an alternate on the Tax Assessment Board of Review for the last several years, there is a vacancy on the board, so in due fashion, we are promoting the alternate to full member. I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
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 Waiting for you. It's all right. We are on reported city offices, Executive Communications, Director Muskin. Actually, we'll give the residents of Crawford Street a minute. Thank you for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. I'm sorry, it all wrapped up over there.
It's all right, Director, you were solving problems.
Trying. It's what we do, right? It's what we love in municipal government, we can fix it.
You're up.
All right, briefly, Cranston Fire Department Deputy Chief Thomas Fredericks has requested to be placed on the pension role, the deputy chief meets all the requirements to do so, and the administration recommends that that be done, and thank deputy chief for his service.
Wish Deputy Chief Thomas Fredericks the best of luck. I'll stand a motion to approve his retirement.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve in a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
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 Yes. Ms. Harvey? Excuse me, guys, I have a stenographer, so if you're going to campaign, you can go outside. Thank you. Director?
Cranston Police Department Major Robert Quirk has requested continuation of service and has met all requirements to do so, and we thank him for his willingness to continue to serve.
Motion to approve, second, I have a motion to approve in a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. And additionally, there was a report on hiring special counsel, that was included in your packets, if anyone has any questions on that, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing none, Executive Communications, and now closed. You're up to Council President, Communications.
Communicate, Council President.
Thank you, Director Muskin. All right, it's been a fun summer, sadly, summer is almost over, I know officially it does not end until the twenty-first of September, however, most of our children in Cranston start back to school on Wednesday, so officially, it is the end of summer for all of us, I hope you all had an enjoyable summer. Fall is my favorite season of the year, so it'll be fun to get back to the fall and see the leaves change and the colors come off the trees, it'll be a fantastic time of year in the fall, and football comes back. With that, I would like to just say everyone enjoy the new school year, if you have students going back, and if you don't, enjoy the new school year anyway, because it'll be quieter during the day, because kids will be in school. Moving on, Councilmember Communications, Councilman Stykos, you're up, sir.
Thank you. I wanted a report from the administration on the status of the violations by yardworks and tally on the fines that have been assessed, if any.
I do not have the full tally on the fines, what I do have is an email that I received from Mr. Pykel on Friday, if I could read it. Into the record, I also have a copy that I can distribute. Very briefly, this is from Stan Pykel, so this is in his words, "As requested, I returned to yardworks once again this morning to investigate activities going on. I met with Mr. Kevin Fox and worked the site with him for quite a while, discussing violations I cited and the next course of action to rectify the issues. While there, I observed one loader start up and move light materials around with very little or no noise. The screening operation was not operating and did not operate at any point today. According to Mr. Fox, activities were very light with no alarming problems or concerns. Eventually, I was presented with some drawings of proposed new structure to be built on the site to house new offices and indoor storage to help clean up the property and to abate the violations that were issued by me." Just for clarification, they've been operating out of a trailer, and they have been cited for that, and so basically, they were told that that's the end of the road on the trailer. So they are proposing a building, an abil building. According to Mr. Pykel, I instructed Mr. Fox that the proposal must go through multiple steps in order to be built, starting with planning for Development Plan Review Committee Meeting, following that, zoning board approval would be necessary, which would trigger Planning Commission as well. He said that he drove down, and then from there, he talks about driving down, I mean, he references specific neighbors in here, which I will give you, it's part of the public record, but I don't want to mention neighbors' names if we don't have to in a public forum. But it was just amicable, and a lot of discussion on what some of the concerns are. So we continue to go over there, Mr. Pykel continues to visit, I will get the tally on the fines, but I know some of the things are still lingering, I believe, in court. So I apologize for not having that, but I will get you that tally, but I will, there are enough copies on that memo from Mr. Pykel, but I wanted you to see directly what had happened. We continue to go out there, we continue to hear from them, there have been second notices issued, in some cases, a second notice, there was one question about a first notice that was issued on thirty June, and the question of why has not been a second notice on that particular issue, they were in process of rectifying it, I believe, so we don't issue the second notice if someone, anybody, in any case, has shown good faith toward moving forward on progress, we only would issue the second notice if they stopped moving forward or they had not responded in the first place. But it doesn't mean, not issuing the second notice does not mean that it's off the radar of the inspections Department. So I will get the fines for you, I don't know why that went off my radar screen, Councilman, but I can get that for you.
Yes, I'm sorry, were you finished? Okay, well, I didn't understand the, now that I have a copy here. The second paragraph, the screening operation was, was, operation was not operating and did not operate at any point today according to Mr. Fox, activities were very light with no alarming problems or concerns happening.
At that moment, yeah.
Right, but that doesn't really address whether the activities are going to be curtailed or...
Again, and I speak with caution, because there has been indication from the neighbors of lawsuit against the city, so I have to, have to act cautiously, there's a frustration for me on this point, because in no way is the city taking any position to let this business continue to interfere in the neighbors' lives. The challenge we face, once again, is that some of their operation falls under the protection of state legislation, and we cannot violate them on things that are state legislation. Regarding that particular aspect of the operation, the fact that Stan indicates that it didn't happen on that day, doesn't mean that if it's something he could cite, he won't continue to look for. Again, I'm sharing with you basically an internal memo, an administrative internal memo, and I'm doing that as a courtesy, to try to be as transparent as I can about this, but again, take in fact that this is an internal memo from one of my directors to the staff, and it will effectively be public information from the standpoint of, anything Stan said there would be public, that they have to go through processes and whatnot, but whether or not that particular aspect of the operation falls under the purview of the city, if he went there and it did fall under the purview and they were operating, he would issue a notice. But if it's something, again, that falls under state statute, we are trapped, and, and I do need to be cautious on that, because there has been very clear indication from the neighbors that they are considering suit against the city, and I, while I certainly appreciate their concerns, and we will continue to do whatever we can do with the business to get them into compliance on things that are Cranston laws, I cannot set this city up for, for, for the cost through a lawsuit.
Okay, the, this statement that they're protected by state law, as I'm sure you're aware, the neighbors are saying that is, is not true. Can we somehow get that defined a little bit more, because the Freedom of Farm law, which I believe is what's being cited, is, you know, that's not, while that yardworks operates a landscaping business, or nursery business, there's no nursery going on there. There's no trees growing.
And that becomes, now that's, again, I would, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think we're teetering now into that legal question of interpretation, and so I'm, I would defer to the solicitor, or at some point, if it becomes a legal matter and we have to get an official statement, we would do so, and in fact, I've even said to the neighbors, if they want to talk to their state reps to interpret the state legislation, I am very supportive of the state helping us out on this, and the state reps helping us out on this, but if at some point we need to get sort of a legal definition, you know, does the law state that you actually have to operate it, or you're licensed to operate it, or, I mean, these are nuances that become legal nuances in a suit? So at this point, all we can do is if we know they're in violation of something in this city, then we cite them, like for instance, the stuff near the river, that we have control over, so...
But there's no report here about the stuff in the river.
That, he had issued violation on that, I can get a file, but I think I reported that we were continuing to work on that last month. So typically, if there's something that he's been working on, I'm just, you know, in talking to him, he is continuing to follow up, Stan, on any of those issues that he has the latitude to. Believe me, this is not a case of, of the administration wanting to say, you know, let them go ahead and do what they want, we certainly do not, and, and we are concerned, but we are also bound by the law, and it's highs and lows, too.
It would be helpful to get, if, if you're bound by the law, and that's the city's position, that's the administration's position, it would be helpful to state exactly what that's based on for the neighbors, because right now, they're saying, "No, it isn't," and you're saying, "Yes, it is," and that just goes back and forth, and it doesn't go anywhere. Except it might go to a suit, because no one's being clear on, on why they would be covered by the Freedom of Farm Act any more than any other gravel pit.
Well, from our perspective, yeah, from our perspective, it reads relatively clearly, and, again, I can't have the city violate the law and be subject to suit, but I also have to be careful, because I don't want to be subject to suit, to yardworks, for us enforcing something we don't have the right to enforce, but I also know that the neighbors have talked about filing suit against the city for lack of enforcement, and with all due respect, now getting into a discussion on how the law reads, I would defer, if you want opinions from solicitor and council attorney, I am absolutely receptive to that, because it's teetering into an area where, it's not a case of an administrative position, it's a case of, I'm told they're in compliance with the law, my building inspector can't, I cannot ask my building inspector to do something that's in violation of state law.
Well, that would be great if, I don't know which one of you would...
Yeah, Councilman, I can speak briefly, I believe, correctly, if I'm wrong, Maria, a nursery is licensed through the state, correct?
I'm totally familiar with it.
Okay, it's my understanding it's a state license, so this, by the way, yardworks is that in Newt, the Cranston Northeast Trees down Pontiac here, they have a nursery license, but they also have the, because under the statute, a nursery has the Freedom of Farm protections, that both Northeast Tree and Yardworks operate under a state license, under a state statute, which gives them more freedoms. Now, this is just pretty recent, my understanding was, Northeast Tree was one of the major lobbyists that got the state to envelop both these definitions, maybe about eight, nine years ago, but it's a state statute that if you're a licensed nursery, now the neighbors could disagree whether it's a nursery, but I would assume, I have all the information that they're a licensed nursery, so they have those freedoms, but we can do some homework on that, get you the statute that they're under, and the fact that they have a valid license, and also remember, that also gives them some zoning, I think, they're zoned for some, I think it's, I don't know if it's heavy construction, I'm not the zoning real estate person, but they are a higher level of zoning where, obviously, it's not residential, they have some light commercial status where they are as well.
So, I mean, okay, thank you, because this is more clear than it's ever been, so basically, what you're saying is, they're, the Freedom of Farm Act covers farms and nurseries.
Correct.
And since they're a licensed nursery, they would have an assumption by the state that they are doing nursery activities since they got a license.
Correct.
Thank you.
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 that they are doing nursery activities since they got a license.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, if you could get me information on the fines and the river issue, what's happening with that, that would be helpful. Thank you. The next item, I think the mayor received a petition, and I received a copy of it concerning 133 Patuxent Avenue. See here. Or maybe the solicitor received it. This is, you know, this is a problem property that this has been going on for more than a, I would say, more than a year. I've talked to the family, really nice family. I used to live two houses from them. So they're very nice people, but their house is falling apart. And it doesn't seem that we're being successful in protecting the other neighbors in the neighborhood from the falling apart house.
I spoke with Mr. Pykel on this today for an update. Pedro has been out there, our housing inspector. They have pulled permits for work, and they are working with Pedro on cleanup and whatever additional permitting they may need. So they are making the effort to do what they need to do, and they have pulled permits to do some of that. I don't have much more detail than that at this point, but at least they are responsive. And it sounded somewhat positive from Mr. Pykel that they're certainly not ignoring us. We haven't, I don't believe, issued any type of further violation. I don't know if there was an initial violation issued or not, but I do know that Pedro did work with them. They have pulled permits, and they are continuing to move forward on cleaning the property up.
Let me just read a paragraph from this letter that I received a copy of. It went to the municipal court. It went to Chris Ross and Ian Pedro of Eila. "Since Chris and Minimum Housing has been overseeing 133 Patuxent Avenue, there's been little progress. Dead trees have been removed by the owner and several unregistered cars gone from the driveway. At the June 23 municipal court hearing, the property owner informed the court that a dumpster had been ordered. Well, the dumpster arrived, was filled, and then taken away. However, none of the safety issues have been resolved, and there's little to no activity at the house." So again, the building, I'm told, is structured, according to this letter, is structurally unsound. The yard and driveway are strewn with trash and abandoned vehicles. There was a backyard pool that is now so overgrown with weeds, it's hardly visible. So it appears that there's minor progress, but I think...
Okay. Follow-up.
Okay. Do you want, do you have that?
Well, I don't call up, but when I do get a letter about that with violations, I normally scan it to Steve Marcella, who would be prosecuting that. What's the date of that letter?
August 10.
Okay. I probably would forward it to Steve to see the progress. As you know, Stan has to address the situation, set up the violations, and then there's a little back and forth. But if I can make a copy of that, I'll re-schedule it to him, okay? But I'll forward it to, I'll forward it to Attorney Marcella tonight and try to get a status on it, okay?
Yeah, I would just make a comment, but I think the, you know, the exterior stuff, it seems like it wouldn't be impossible to address.
And these would be violations that are, although it's private property, are violating the housing code.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Stagkos. Councilman Arquette, did you want to talk about the stop sign again?
Thank you, Council President. I'm not, I mean, I think we, we lost a lot. I think we don't need to discuss that. I have something else, though, I'd like to mention.
Discount.
Through the chair, to the administration, I called in 103 Calumney Road, unkept yard, so I think we need to look at that. It seems like my communications get gobbled up in transmission sometimes. Also, to the chair administration, I hope we can address the speeding on Crawford. The worst time is from 5:00 to 9:00. I think we need to address the homeless man living on the bridge. The sooner the better on that. So as long as the administration work with me on those issues, I'll feel comfortable. Thank you.
They will be sending me an email with that document they read into the record tonight, and, because there were just so many issues, it involved so many different departments. So I want to just have one central area where I can start working on those.
Councilman Stagkos, follow-up?
Yes. On the yard issue, is, do you know or what the, how do these yards get addressed, where the city goes and mows the lawn and puts a lien on the property? What's the, do you wait a certain length of time, or what?
The code is pretty clear that it has to be an extreme hazardous situation. It has to be clearly a public safety issue. So we don't, if a lawn gets overgrown, we do not go mow lawns and put a lien on the property. Because there's a very fine line between a property that doesn't look nice and frankly, an unsafe property. And sometimes they get close. You know, if you have property that's drawing rats, now you may have a public safety issue. But the ordinance is pretty clear on our ability to do that. I believe the words are extreme hazard or public safety hazard. There's, it's got to be pretty extreme. So we have to be careful of that.
Something like rats or fences around a swimming pool that's down?
So that's why when you mentioned the pool, that would be something I would follow up on right away. So when we have fences down around swimming pools and we get no response on that, we will take action and put the lien on the property. But there's a very fine line between the government marching onto people's property and doing things, and we try to be very cognizant of that. You may have an elderly person in Florida or somebody who gets ill and their lawn gets overgrown. For that, we're not going to send, we're not going to put a lien on somebody's property and mow their lawn. But if it's a continued hazard, and now the house has broken windows, and basement windows where a child could fall in, or a refrigerator on the front lawn that a kid could get caught up in, then we're more inclined to take definite action. Really, public safety is the delineating factor. Unfortunately, aesthetics are problematic, and we might issue violations, but to go onto somebody's property and do that type of thing for aesthetic reasons really is a very delicate line to cross.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you, Councilman Hopkins. I mean, thank you, Councilman Stagkos. Councilman Hopkins, you're next, sir.
Thank you, President. Through the chair, to the administration, Rob, and I've received multiple calls from the Cranston Eastern Little League requesting a couple of nights to use at Cranston Stadium. They were denied. Again, they were asking for two nights. I know Councilman Brady's also been called on this. This is the league that's going from Little League to the big field, and they would like to get the kids to play on the couple of nights. I know that there are some adult leagues that use the facility that aren't even Cranston residents, yet we've got our own kids being denied use of that facility. On behalf of the Cranston Eastern Little League, I'm requesting that we look at that again and try to get them at least two nights.
And is it, like, two nights, just two nights, or just a week?
Just two nights.
Not two nights a week, just two nights?
Just two nights for the rest of the season.
Please send me an email, just please send me an email on that.
I sure will.
Thank you. I'll check that tomorrow.
And also, the leash law enforcement with dogs in the city, we've had some numerous issues, both in Garden City and then again today down at Budland, the ballpark, where we've had some major concerns in regards to dogs running free without leashes and the owners feeling that they have the right to do this. I myself had three of them attack me the other night as I was walking my dog on the leash, which led to a confrontation with a neighbor. And again, to me, this just reemphasizes our need for dog parks. But at the same time, if we could somehow patrol these areas and get these people to pay the fine if they're not going to abide by the law and walk, keep their dogs on leashes...
It's actually very dangerous. I will mention it to the police chief. I'm not sure, you know, how much we can do if we don't know, but if someone calls it in, I will make sure that he's aware that it's something we want to have actively dealt with. And if there's something proactively that animal control can think of, we'll certainly follow up.
Thank you.
But if it's down at Budland routinely, we can just make sure that whoever that district officer, those district officers are, keep an eye open for it.
And also, a shout-out to Carlos. I'd like to thank him. I had called him a couple of times this week on constituent concerns about trees that were ready to fall and overgrown, and he addressed it immediately for me. So I just wanted to give him a shout-out and please pass that along to Carlos. Thank you.
Councilmember Lanny, and then Councilman Brady.
Thank you, President. Dog parks, didn't you pass a resolution to look at the Cullyan property?
It's on Under Old Business tonight, yeah. I believe we have. I started to do some preliminary research on that, and the answers that I'm getting right now are that D E M is absolutely not receptive to anything going there. I am following up to see if there's something we can do minimally expensive, capping, topping, but I don't know what it's going to take for us to be able to do that. It's kind of a shame because it's sitting there.
It's an ideal subs.
Yeah, and it's off the road, it's a lot of, so I'll continue to follow up and look at that deed and what that language says, what we can and can't do with it. But, you know, we're trying, it's just, again, we have some restrictions there that are making it a little difficult.
Okay. Thank you for your...
I'll keep on it, though.
Councilman Stagkos.
Did you receive a copy of the email that I received from the woman who's the head of Planning and Development, where she said that the state would probably be amenable to a dog park?
I did, and then information that I had from Public Works was sort of in contradiction to that. So I've got to find out where there's a gap and why, you know, what's being interpreted differently on this. So I'll check that out, because I think she sounded somewhat supportive of the concept. Yeah. So I'll keep, I'll keep at it.
I'd also note that what the city's currently doing on that property is certainly a violation of the easement. Dumping asphalt, dumping...
Actually, the city dumps brush there, which is not in violation.
A what?
Brush is not in violation. Brush. I believe that there's brush that goes there. Brush.
Brush, like big log?
Tree. Tree stuff. I think that that's what goes there. Actually, asphalt and any sand and salt is taken up toward western Cranston.
Well, I've seen a pile of asphalt.
Well, I'll find out. They shouldn't...
I mean, it's, I don't think it's there anymore.
Yeah, I'll find out, I think it should not be. Yeah, we're very careful about that, and I'm pretty aware of where they dump it, a lot of what they dump, and so I try to keep an eye on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Lanny, then Councilman Hopkins, then Councilman Brady.
All right, to change the subject.
Hang on.
I got the legal expenses, and according to my figures, estimates anyways, it's an additional $13,500 in additional legal expenses on the Gilbo case. Any updates on that?
I would, in fact, I just had a discussion today that I would like to, in executive session, meet with the council. There has been a lot of activity, but it's nothing that I can discuss in a public forum because it is a legal matter. But I would very much like to speak with the council on the position that we're in at this point. I've been actively working on it aggressively the past two weeks, so I'm not surprised that this month's legal bill is the past, or the last, I'd say past, probably the past month. It has been on my desk and eaten up huge hours of my time, so if it's eating up huge hours of my time, then it's probably taken up some hours of lawyer's time, too. But it is a significant case, and it holds a lot of weight, however we go with the city. And again, we talk about the delicate balance of when you fight and what's in the best interest of taxpayers and when you settle. And there are a lot of things that go into those decisions. And I am very, very happy and actually looking forward to briefing the council on this. I would probably, over the next, probably in the executive session prior to next month's meeting.
That's great. I'm sure the council is forward to it also.
Director Ruskin, do you want to pencil in the executive session for 6:15 before next month's council meeting?
Perfect.
There we go. Before the matters...
That easy. See, that, that easy, council.
Deal with matter.
Yeah, now it's that easy.
September's meeting. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, President. Just as a follow-up to Councilman Stagkos, I had a letter of concern from a wonderful constituent in regards to the Cullyan property. We do dump snow there.
Yes.
From the Garden City, and we've made an agreement to dump the snow there so that it didn't affect the hollows, the area where it was being stored during the winter. And it piled up so much that it was melting into their yards. So we did make an agreement last year to move that snow, and hopefully that'll continue. I know it's going to be 95 tomorrow, but...
Just have them keep up with, they contact you and there's an issue with what's going on, just let us know. We'll tell Highway not to. I mean, we face challenges in the city, you know, as large as we are, there's really not a lot of places to dump, which is a great thing, because that means we don't have a lot of sort of ugly vacant spaces. But on the flip side, there are logistic challenges that go with that.
I just want to be aware that Garden City doesn't make that monstrosity of a snow pile in that we do get the snow shipped over to Cullyan. Thank you.
Councilman Brady.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to go on record and say the administration's doing a good job working with some concerned residents on mobile ad regarding dumping, no through trucks, putting some signs back up and speeding. They were going to come and speak tonight, but they're going to hold off to speak on this issue because they feel like the administration's been very responsive on it. I just ask that we continue to follow through on them.
Absolutely, sir.
In addition to that, I also wanted to bring up the property, the Wildflower Courts, which are basketball courts and tennis courts. I've been getting numerous complaints on the conditions of those courts. It doesn't seem like it's in our, any type of near soon plan to fix them. But if we could just, you know, maybe consider that for a future dog park, or consider looking at in the future for some crack filling and putting nets back up and things along that and such, that would be great.
Has that been brought to the administration's attention?
This is the first that I'm bringing up personally. I don't know...
Yeah, so I want to move on.
To the administration, this was brought up before the nets were taken down a few years ago because some of the residents who used to live there did not want basketball and tennis, but now that the residents have cycled through, we have their families again, they want basketball and tennis.
Okay. If you could drop me an email, just send an email as a reminder. I don't need to be flippant, I asked you guys to send me an email, but if I write it down, it goes on the paper and then it gets shoveled somewhere. So I just, so I can be responsive, please email me.
Understood. Thank you.
Council Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick question. I was listening to Councilman Stagkos's petition there. They had a question through the administration. Didn't we pass something on dumpsters, which didn't allow them to go, to stay for long periods of time?
Yeah, they can stay, I believe, up to a certain number of weeks, or a week or two weeks we passed, because it was actually Ward Two Initiative by Councilman McCollie, I think. So they can bring them in, but they do have to take them away, yes. They can use the cleanups, but, yeah.
To the solicitor, I mean, I, one of the things that they stated was that the dumpster was brought in and it was taken away rather quickly, but that's the, that's the law that we passed.
Yes.
And if they cleaned up that and one other, and the trees and debris, then I would think that that, I would guess that the municipal court looked at that as substantial, you know, movement toward...
And all the things it sounds like they did were things that might have not required huge amounts of time and excessive cost. You know, every time they order a dumpster back, it's several hundred dollars, and I don't know what their financial situation is. So again, we want to be accommodating, we want to be accommodating to the neighbors, but we also don't want to hurt residents who are trying and making a good faith effort. So if they did do that, but I'll follow up to see if there's any bit of gap in, you know, what's taking so long and any further progress. If they did get permits, it may be that they're just getting enough money to get contractors in to do certain work, I don't know. But, you know, again, we come down to that balance of if they're trying and making a good faith effort, people do struggle with issues we don't necessarily know about, and yet I don't want to be unfair to neighbors. If there's something unsafe, that's a different story.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilman McCollie, since you're the only one that didn't have any communications, everything good?
Want to just say hi, Councilman? Because everybody else has said hi.
Everything's good, because I meet on a regular basis. The administration is very accommodating, and as I get a problem, I try and meet and get it rectified. So I appreciate the help. Thank you.
Fantastic.
With that, no further Council member communications. I'll close that section of the meeting. Old business, there is no old business. Introduction of new business, Madam Clerk.
The following ordinances are to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for hearing on September 13. Proposed Ordinance 8-1801, an Amendment of Title II of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Administration and Personnel for Diversity Hiring. Proposed Ordinance 8-1802, an Amendment of Title 15.12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Building Code for Building Code Violations Electronic Monitoring. Proposed ordinance 8-1807, an amendment of Chapter 10.32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Motor Vehicles in Traffic for a four-way stop at Harwich Road and Chatham Road. The following ordinances are to be referred to the Public Works Committee for hearing on September 13th. Proposed ordinance 8-1803, authorizing the person agent to execute a grant of easement for use of city property on Garden City Drive. Resolution, I'm sorry, National Grid and Verizon Joint Power Location Request for 56 Phoenix Avenue. The following ordinances are to be referred for hearing to the ordinance committee on October 11th. Proposed ordinance 8-1804, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, titled Zoning, a zone change for 1055 Oak Road Avenue. Proposed ordinance 8-1805, amending the comprehensive plan for Zero Phoenix Avenue. And proposed ordinance 8-1806, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Zoning, change zone for Zero Phoenix Avenue. Then we have the following resolution to be referred to the Public Works Committee for hearing on October 11th. Resolution instituting proceedings for abandonment of an unnamed street on southerly side of Park Avenue between Gansett Avenue and Budlong Road. Then we have the following claims to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on October 1st, 2018. Both are property damage claims, one from Marsh and Christian Bank from a large incident on August 8th, 2018. The other Cox facilities from a large incident on June 14th, 2018. And that's all I have.
I will adjourn the motion to send the business to the proper committee for a public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, and a discussion. Seeing now, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, we have two pieces of miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk, one of which is a collective bargaining agreement with Royal Laborers, awaiting an executed copy, which I believe is...
Circulating for signatures.
For signatures, and the resolution which Director Muskin already brought up about the Cullyan dog park. With that, takes care of all the business coming before us tonight. The city's council's next regularly monthly communication will be held on Monday, September 24th, 2018. With that, I will adjourn. Motion adjourned, I have a second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you for your time tonight, everyone.